Ladies and gentlemen, the Jamestown City Council February 17th is now called to order. HK.
Good morning. Good Father, just thank you for this great day you've given to us, another opportunity to serve the people of this city, this community. We thank you for all these servants who are willing to serve and give their time to make this place a better place. May all that is said and done tonight be with your glory and your will in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we have tonight is we need to approve the meetings, the minutes from our last meeting. We had the record scheduled meeting and then the also special call meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to look over those. So if everybody's okay with those minutes, I need a motion for those minutes to be approved.
Motion made.
Any second?
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good to see you, Ava.
Oh yeah, we need to welcome Ada. Ada, Ada.
Ada, I said, yeah.
Ada, she's our new city council meeting, so welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. So our next thing on our agenda is our inter-local homeless prevention and support agreement. Last year, the city of Russell Springs, city of Jamestown, and your county fiscal court agreed to all donate $1,500 each. And that was to help support the homeless, try to find them places to live, programs to get into, and stuff to help try to take care of those. The county has already voted to do this again. It's time to renew that. So we need to decide if we want to renew that agreement again.
I make motion to review it.
Any second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's only $1,500 again.
You never lose the helping people, no. Exactly right.
The next thing we have, we've had Jeff Ricker, a guy that came to us back last meeting. And we talked about a new event that he was wanting to get started in Jamestown. Lake Rattle and Roll was the name of the event that they are wanting to try to do. And we talked to him about that, about trying to get something scheduled. And we met with him this last week and he's come up with a budget and expenses and different things that would be included in that. But we're going to get him on the phone and talk to him because there's, he's asking for a sponsorship. There's the.
John, John. Hey Jeff, how you doing?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good. I got you on speakerphone here at the council meeting.
Well, thank you. I'm actually sitting in the airport. I'm taking an early flight and we're the process of boarding, so I think for about 15 minutes, but I'll do by then. Well, do you want me to start and just thank everybody or?
Yeah, that's fine. You can take off.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for getting together again. I put together a little update on proposed legislative budget that we went through earlier in the week. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or my email might be better. I wasn't planning on catching an early flight back, but I'm at the airport now. So just a couple of things that we pointed out on there. Then these are preliminary numbers, but we feel very strongly about the possibility that we might be able to produce. The expenses, I mean, are very reasonable. The additional use of funds is set there such that it would be more or less a wash for the city. In other words, everything that we're asking for the city, we are in hopes of putting back into the city in the form of community development, I guess you could say. Going to programs such as health, education, history, and just benefit of the city in general. One additional point that came up while we were discussing was that it can be sometimes difficult for Lake Fest to generate sponsorships. And I propose that the numbers would not look a whole lot different. Perhaps we could roll both projects into our efforts as one. So we would help the city to raise the sponsorship dollars for both Lake Fest and Lake Rattle and Roll. And in that way, presenting to sponsors two opportunities for, in a sense, the price of one. So if they were to support one, they would get signage or mention based upon their level of support in both events. And that way, we would be a step ahead and really helping the city to put on a fantastic pair of events without any type of cannibalism, so to speak whatsoever. One would help the other and together they could grow in conjunction, possibly be even much larger next year.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or anything that they want to talk to Jeff about while he's on the phone?
Well, Debbie and Tyler are more familiar with how hard it is to get sponsorship to nearby here.
That's, we have our job. We're pretty much the city sponsors of Lake Fest. It's not a sponsored event at all. We get a few like small sponsorships, but for the most part, it's pretty much a city sponsored city event.
Do you have any ideas as far as many sponsors that with that large amount, amount, want to come out, amount of money? He probably didn't understand.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
I stuttered as much.
Yeah, yeah. He was asking if you had any ideas on any sponsors that were going to give that large amount of money. Like your diamond sponsors and some of your gold sponsors, I guess.
Great, great question. We've already begun discussions with Dollar General. Dollar General has some grants that are available, especially when literacy is involved. I've got a lot of connections with Dollar General from my education. Current COO of Dollar General's, a Vanderbilt poet grad, that's where I got my MBA as well, and so is the senior director of marketing. So I think, I think we can certainly be in front of them and propose the two opportunities. And I think based on my initial discussions with two folks there, one locally and then one at headquarters. They are looking for every opportunity to get in front of local residents and they're becoming very aggressive about that. So I think they are probably the primary large market sponsor. I think the other ones on the list include O'Reilly, Family Medical, which one else? You've got Walgreens, you've got, man, there's a host of corporate sponsors. You've got Dr. Schneider, you've got Bruce. And I think there's quite a few corporate sponsor opportunities. And we set, set the levels such that, you know, there's so many different levels that I think there's something for everyone. And what we would like to do, if, you know, whether it be tonight or as soon as possible, is for someone to bring forth a motion that would give a preliminary support from the city. Perhaps it's, you know, an initial agreement of a $10,000 sponsorship and hurdle, achievement hurdles, such that if we raise an additional, you know, say $15,000 through other sources, then the city, the city will step in with the remaining $10,000 or, you know, whatever seems reasonable. I think the city has the most to gain for these events. And so that's why we would like the city to take the first move. Once the city does take a first move and taking it on both events, that will certainly go a long way to convincing any sponsors of the opportunities because it's that partnership, the public private partnership that is in the forefront of so many corporations today.
Any other questions? I know you're kind of pressed for time, so we'll try to get any questions to you that we can while you're on the phone.
Thank you.
Well, I was COVID the last time I heard him on the phone. I mean, he's done his homework evidently, you know. Some of the sponsors I questioned whether they would or not. But if you got a lot of smaller ones instead of.
The big ones.
The big boys, you know, if you had plenty of small ones, it would be doable, I think.
Anybody?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It was just Mr. Coffey was just saying that, you know, he kind of has a little concern with maybe being able to get that many large, but you may be able to get enough support with some smaller ones to cover some of that also.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think the smaller ones, we can certainly count on the smaller ones. But I think one of the benefits that we have with going through the smaller ones, what we heard in the brief meeting on Monday, is that so many people have been approached by the, the same people have been approached by the same people for so many years. And I think what we offer is just coming in with new resources, new network of connections, new opportunities. And I think that's going to entice both the smaller local sponsors as well as the larger corporate sponsors. Because they're going to see, first of all, with Lake Fest, a festival that's going on for years. You know, Mark mentioned on Monday, some of the accounts he has from last year's, or previous years, Lake Fest. And that will help in gaining the attention of the corporate sponsors. If he had over, I think it was 3,300 door entries, well, then we can expect at least that much in this year. Because we're coming out of, I mean, we are literally coming out of COVID. And if we can expect, you know, a half to two-thirds of that from Lake Rattle and Roll, well, those are real numbers. And, you know, all of that is verifiable from Mark's data and can be presented in such a way that I think corporate leadership can really take notice.
Where do we stand as far as the highway shutting down?
That's been approved. We're good on highway shutdown.
So we have that approved.
Yeah, we just have to make sure we've got people at all the shutdown places and, you know, we've got people there working.
Redirecting traffic.
Directing traffic, yeah.
And you'll see on here, he's got it the next, the following weekend from what we started.
Yeah.
There was a conflict, so instead of the 14th, it's going to be the 21st, weekend of the 21st.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. And that has been cleared with Lance Burton, with Jamestown Christian, with the use of their facility for Ricker going involved. And furthermore, one of the things that we talked about is taking off the Go kart racing this year or the lawnmower racing, just because that thing presents some hurdles or challenges that people are not ready or could just impede our progress. And so at this point, I think going with the, you know, the bug parade, the food vendors, the craft vendors, the bounce houses, the entertainment on two stages, the world renowned magician Elvis and Percy, all these things, that's playing for the Lake Rattle and Roll.
I like it if we can pull off the money, you know, it sounds. Yeah, yeah.
Tony, anything, any questions for Jeff?
No, I don't think so, but this might be something that, because this is the first time I've seen this.
Right, yeah, we just got, we just.
I'd like to have a couple of days to look it over and kind of think things over before we make any commitment.
Well, I would just invite anyone or everyone, if you would like to meet personally and have any kind of, sit down and kind of walk through how we arrived, how we arrived at each of these numbers and some of the progress that we've already made with respect to specific sponsors. I'm absolutely happy to do that at everyone's convenience.
When would you? Okay, that's why I was going to ask you when you would be available to do that again. I know if you're at the airport, you're apparently headed out of town.
I am. I'll arrive in Lexington at 11:57, so I'll be home, what, about 3:00 in the morning.
Okay, you're coming, not going then.
What's that?
I said, you're coming instead of going then. You're on the way home.
Not sure, I forget what you said, but.
I said, I said, so you're on the way home instead of on the way out someplace.
Yes, I am on the way out.
Okay.
I've been down, down south for a few days for work.
What do we get together when he gets back and jump things through?
Okay, Jeff, we're going to let you go because I know you're probably waiting, I know how it is, at the airport. So we'll go on and have a discussion and maybe if you're available, I think some of the councils may want to get together with you and discuss some stuff. So maybe we can set up a date when you get back to do that.
That would be great. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I literally just found my seat on the plane, so thank you all tonight and I look forward to seeing you all very soon.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
All right, God love you all.
You too. Bye-bye. So you all want to just kind of table this until we can get with him and because they're asking for a sponsorship and.
That's how I shake her head there on a couple of them. I know she's been involved with some larger corporate deals, you know, that's where we're going to go.
Well, my concern would only be is if the city did sponsor and they did not meet these other tier sponsorships. Because honestly, when he hit O'Reilly's and he hit Walgreens, I can tell you, O'Reilly's and that's on a parts in Napa. They only do a tier sponsorship like this on a corporate level and it's got to have something in it for them. And it can't just be a one and done thing. It's kind of like Summer Nights Cruise in Somerset. When you buy a tier sponsorship like the diamond sponsorship of $10,000, that's giving you the first Saturday of every month from April to October. And in doing that, they set up booths, they have sales, they are making money back from it. Their name is not just as the lead corporate sponsor, but they are actually making money back, going back into their stores. So to find that here in Jamestown, Russell County, it's going to be really hard at that level. And he's putting a lot into those high sponsorships there.
Yeah.
I mean, $47,000 is a lot.
And I think my opinion on that would be anything that the city did agree to get would have to be under the fact that these other sponsors came in before, you know, even if we agreed on it now, these other sponsors had to be, come through and they would have that money or our sponsorship money didn't go forward. Also, we have to consider what we're paying out. Not only are we asking for sponsorship money, but we're paying out a lot in overtime for health, to set up at all of your stops, for the cleanup, for everything that's going on that day. We're going to be out quite a bit of money because you've got quite a few employees and that's all overtime pay.
You're talking about a lot of money for maybe a trial run, or I think.
And, you know, I know everything has to start somewhere. We, you know, we've got to start with the first time for everything. But I think there's a lot of ifs here, if this happens and.
I mean, I'm not that sharp, but that's a lot of money for a small town to, you know, well. If we still had through the loan, sure, money rolling in. I mean, that might sound foolish, but.
I would like to see the amount of commitments from some of the silver and the gold sponsorships. I mean, to see that we're not in this on our own.
Now, I think that anything that we, I agree completely, anything that we commit to would be upon the understanding that these other sponsors would come through.
I think.
I think, the way he talks, I think he's going to want us to commit so that they'll know that there's money coming.
Right, he wants us. They're guaranteed so much. He wants us to commit half of ours so that he can go to the others and say, the city has committed and, you know, and that would help maybe encourage.
So, so we're kind of.
And then if nobody did follow through, then it would be, you know, we're not obligated, no.
Right, I think that would be the main point that we need to stress.
Tell him to get everybody committed and then go to us.
Well, we can get the rest of these. We're willing to do this. But if you don't get that, then our commitment comes back, you know. We're only committed if everybody else comes through. I mean, that's just something, y'all, if you want to get together and meet with them, everybody have a better understanding and then us come back and talk about what we want to do. That way, everybody gets a full understanding of that. He may have answers to things. We need him to, we're not making a commitment to give that money unless this other stuff comes through. Or whatever amount that we do want to give, because they ask for a certain amount, don't mean that we have to give that amount. That's what they're asking for. So I think if you want to set a date and get with him, talk to him, that's fair to everybody. That's fair to him. He's put a lot of work into it. Fair to us to know what's going on before we commit.
And I think he's got a really great idea here. I mean, I think it's something that would be a hit and it would grow over time, over from year to year. I think it would be a really big thing because this is going to pull in a lot of people off the lake to come into town too. And maybe some of his corporate sponsors can be some of the marinas. I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if he's going to, you know, if they're going to get out and work and get the sponsors and then, you know. But I think, I think if you all want to meet with him, that's a start to everybody having a better understanding.
Well, we just kind of, you know, you get on with it pretty quick, you know.
Yes.
And because you're looking at.
It's going to take a while to get all that, you know, to get to sponsors, to get them to commit. You're going to have to know how much, what you're looking at, who all you're going to get to commit to be here. Just like some of this stuff, you know, I see, where was it? Lance Burton, $10,000 maybe. I think that's an estimate of what.
I tell you what, Lance, that's a big, that's a big act though. I mean, that is huge.
But I'm just saying, you've got to have so much money before you can get him to commit. And you've got to have time to do that. If you can't get with him the last week and say, "We've decided to do it," so we need to get something rolling and then make a decision.
Three months, three months after the date, man.
Just get with it as soon as we can, I would say.
And early one night or early next week.
Yeah, and get on with it one way or the other, you know.
Y'all, everybody, you guys got a certain day that they want to try and do with them?
No, well, Wednesday, I have to go back to the UK and the Mark G. Cantor Center, the Wednesday.
About Tuesday, whatever I got going on Tuesday. I don't care to get with him or not, sometimes to get with him and see if Tuesday works, that work, do you tell me?
Find out for him and then contact, or, you know, maybe.
I'll talk to him, but I just kind of need a date that's good for everybody to try to see if that works.
I can do about any evening next week.
Okay.
Just want it to work for the rest of you guys.
All right, anything else on that?
Is this something we're talking about? I have a special call meeting having here. We're going to have a forum. Cause that's a.
Cause if we have that many people, we have to.
We have to. Get it out the breast.
We're all getting together. We have to have a.
And we're going to do it Tuesday. We're off Monday. If you don't know, we have to, it's going to be at least 24 hours.
About Thursday.
I mean, I can send it, as long as we know the time, I can send it out tomorrow if you want to do Tuesday.
They're not all about can.
Yes, that's right.
Well, he's on his way back. The way he says he talked anytime next week, he would be.
Can you get with him tomorrow? I can't tomorrow because I'm going to be out of town. Okay, let's, let's plan on Tuesday. I'll let you all know because we know we've got a preferred date with him.
Afternoon this night, 6:53, 5, what would that?
12.
Whatever, didn't matter to me. I got a commitment at 6:00, 5:00 it's really on Tuesday. Hold that money.
It's a holiday.
The hallway is a holiday, yeah, yeah.
Thursday?
Really, I think it. 4:00 is too early on Tuesday, isn't it?
It'd be hard.
Too early for me.
It's hard for me.
I've got to work until 4:00.
You know.
By the time I get out.
It's hard for me.
What's everybody else?
I work till 4:00.
I'm off Tuesday.
You're about 4:30? You want to try 4:30? Can you make it, Terry?
Uh, Tuesday?
4:30?
Yeah. I think so unless something comes up.
All right, let's try that. If we can change it, we can. Okay. Next thing that we have on our agenda is our IDA board appointment. This is who represents the city of Jamestown on the industrial authority, industrial development authority. And Tom Preston is our current, he's the one that's up for renewal. His term would be up in February. So we need to decide if we have anyone else that we want to nominate for this position or if we want to keep Mr. Preston. So I just need if someone wants to make a nomination to keep Mr. Preston or if someone has a motion to nominate someone else.
I'm making a nomination to keep the one we got, I guess, because I don't want anybody.
Check.
Got first and second? Want to call her out?
Ada.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Tony, you're up. You didn't even get me that stuff. I was going to tell her your arms.
Yeah.
Not me.
Where am I?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess Mr. Preston will remain representing this for the city and I'll let him know that.
Can you travel this in the dog's seat? You're going to go on the walk with him?
I stuttered as much while I was walking. No way you can understand me.
Any other, go ahead.
A guy called me, Morrison, Morse, about the cemetery. And he said he'd talk to you, coming, coming.
Yeah, I think he called everybody.
And I told him I'd mentioned, I mean, he, I think he said he had talked to you about.
He has, he's talked and his concern is the lot that we have where the Jamestown court was.
Yeah.
Is to keep that to where it's available for cemetery for when they need more.
Yeah, he said something about maybe.
Veterans.
Veterans, yeah.
And he, which I, I think that's a good idea. He thinks that it would be a good idea to have a section for veterans, for Martin.
That's what he told me, yeah.
So I think sometime we need to try to discuss that and see because I know that when we bought that, it was from cemetery fund. And I think it was with the thoughts of there's going to need to be more cemetery land.
But we don't have, we don't have a cemetery board anymore. We don't have, we don't have a cemetery board anymore, like, really, I mean, there's nobody that's still...
Uh, Debbie's on it, I'd have to go back and look, I don't, um...
I think Marsh Lane was it one time, wasn't you?
I think so, and then, um...
Janet Wilkinson, Elaine Weston?
Yeah, that's...
There is still some activity.
She's the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've replaced everybody, uh, I'm pretty sure we've replaced everybody that come off of it.
Yeah, well, it was purchased, we purchased it with the cemetery, if I remember that.
We did.
It was, it was purchased with cemetery money and clean with City General.
Yeah.
Well, you can look at how fast that cemetery's filled up in the last twenty years.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, but it's gonna happen.
Unfortunately, that's right.
Yeah, but that's, it's just the ideal spot, I mean, to go ahead and, and uh, you know, even that, that house at Burnet there, I wondered if that was even for sale.
He told me he was moving it out this week, but I don't know, Josh, what's his name?
It's uh Josh, uh...
I just watched about property, you know?
There was some discussion about that before. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, cleaning, cleaning it up, I, I know there was some discussion before, but...
I think anything we can look at, you know, around the cemetery, we need to think about, because there's only so much planned there, and we're gonna need more, so, you know? Can't uh, can't get any more there than we can do it, so. So we need to probably, in the future, near future, think about going ahead and making a decision on that, if we are gonna do that, so.
I wouldn't have heard if we're gonna do that to have the cemetery board down here, yeah, at the, at the meeting.
Or the person, do you just get him, get him here to the next meeting, or a special colony?
I think we just do the next meeting.
Do you need a report on our little lawsuit about the dockery thing?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
As you all know, the, the Bank of Jamestown holds stock that is to be used uh the money proceeds for the bank to maintain the Simcoe Dockery Monument, that's the tallest rock up here, I bet you could say. Well, they're tired of doing that, and it's not working out anyway. So what has happened now, lawsuits have been filed, federal lawsuits, to dissolve the trust that set that up back in nineteen hundred or something like that, and to take that stock money, which is several, I won't say hundred thousand dollars, maybe three or four hundred thousand, it's quite a bit, it's...
Three or four hundred, three or four hundred, I believe.
It's a lot of money. And uh divide that among the heirs, can you imagine, it's a Simcoe Dockery, which are, they go, they go all of them down the Cumber River. Uh, but the city is in the lawsuit in order to simply maintain it, to get a, I hope, a substantial share of that trust for maintaining that rock. So the judge has appointed special master commissioner, uh, turning over uh Montesol, Jay, Jay, Jay Jones, to find out who the heirs are, which is gonna be a really hard job, just like running a family tree, you know, for real, a lot of families, yeah? And then, once that is found, divided up amongst them, including what our share as a city would be. And there will probably be hearings on that, and all of those things, I wouldn't run it by, of course, you all, because I'll be in court for that, to see what a reasonable sum would be, because I asked the former mayor how much we should get, he said, "We want all of it." I said, "All right, well, you see, I don't know..." I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think we're entitled to a fair share, because cemeteries never look better, and I've been here a long time. We wanna keep it...
You gotta find out who they are.
I, I, fortunately, it's not my responsibility.
But just advertise it, and they'll come out of the wood.
Well, yeah, they're doing that, and their attorney, their warning order attorney's telling people, and turning flags, and...
I bet, I bet. I bet, I bet, I hear council members ain't trying to real ring or nothing.
I know a lot of people have already got the, the notices, I know some of the relatives, it's already been done, it's supposed to have a court date.
Yes, but the court date's set, maybe in eight four or something.
What's that name again?
Simcoe, S I, S I M C O, Dockery, D O C K E R Y.
He was on the Kentucky Assembly, wasn't he, or something like that, he was?
He was on the founding of the bank.
Yes.
He into a three-oh guy, and very prominent in that, in that era, I think they all came off the river, of course, where the money was back in eighteen eighty.
Most of, yeah, most of his descendants live in Union Chapel, Bryan area now.
I think you're right, and maybe one of them.
Nikki Garner is, that's how I know. His mother's church was somewhere about ten years ago.
Yes, okay, yes.
That's all.
And I, I'm excited for all, I'm excited for all of them, but the city needs some, because we keep it up, and we survive on taxpayer money, I guess, a donation, so...
Maybe they can be your sponsors.
What's that?
Maybe they can be your sponsors.
Oh, maybe the, the, the heirs of Simcoe Dockery.
Simcoe was fond of himself, wasn't he? He wanted that, kept looking good.
And it was to put flowers instead of...
Well, you know, I was just saying, back in the olden days, really, you put fences up around graves to keep everybody out. And I'm just guessing, when it was really rough, because what do you handle that much? There might have been a fence up, you know, to keep cattle out, hogs, you know, have, have, things were rough in those days. So, who knows, but uh the bank is not doing the job that probably they thought they should be doing, and uh but you left up there, there's...
They fell apart.
I think that one. All right, I'll go. But anyway, it's, it's exciting, it's part of Russell County history, and uh we have a rich history, we just unveil it all the time, so...
So hopefully, we'll get something there for the cemetery, though, to keep it all...
We, we will, we will, we will.
Um, the only thing that I have in uh mayor's moments is uh Mike Biehau, that works for the city. It's gonna be having a pacemaker put in, and then, we wanna remember him and his prayers and thoughts, and then Terry.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where in my business, you know, it happened, it's just a quarter, when they get my heart lined up to where they feel safe about putting me to sleep, same thing I went through, like, you were the kidney, they had to get me where I could, you know, they felt comfortable putting me to sleep, and certainly makes me feel more comfortable, I say that, you know?
Anybody have anything?
Ma'am, I'm Jeff Folly, I know many, I'll take but a second.
Okay.
I was working with an organization for, I've been helping a lot of people, as y'all know, for the last six years, since I got rehabilitated and, and my recovery. And uh the place has expanded in my recovery program, we kept enough people clean and sober that they've expanded. And now I'm moving on to things that I do on top of all that. Uh, and my question would be, where do I take the homeless and the housing people? I already, I already worked with uh Michael Wilson, Susan Adams, Drug Corps, all this stuff, I help a lot of clients, just any way I can, sponsor a bunch of them, but anyway, uh fifteen hundred, this is all first quarter business, Ken.
Right.
The fifteen hundred for the homeless, where did that money go, where I can take it?
Get with them?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a group I know that, they have that set up in account, from what I understand, I think all of that...
I think the fiscal court's got it.
Fiscal court holds on to it, but I think they still have that account with money there that has been donated, so fiscal court, I get in touch with Gary Robertson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need their money, I've got plenty of money, I used to be a drug dealer. I, I'm not asking for any funding for me, as of right now, because I'm a one-man show, not to bro, brag your boat, but I've been doing all this on my own, I have a list of things I can do, that's for later on, and I don't even have enough time to go over all that stuff. But I have the disabled, elderly, the USDA, I know how to do all this stuff, because of my addiction, and the prisons, jails. I have started over so many times, till I'm a human resource machine. So now, I don't do it for myself, I pass it all along to all these people that need it, parolees, jailies, homeless, recovering addicts and alcoholics, I've been really bothering that a long time. Other than disabled, I take to the USDA and have them fill out the paperwork.
Right.
Because I use all these services myself, that's how I know to do it.
Yeah, I do, yeah, sure.
So anyway, I'm not asking where the money's at, I'm saying, who do I expect?
That's who's in charge of it, the fiscal court's who you would need to contact to see what they do, and where they're taking it.
Where they're, where they're taking the homeless people to?
Yes.
I'm just looking for a man now, is getting his up papers filled out.
Mr. Kearns, do you know anything about what they do with uh, when they uh are dealing with the homeless people, about, they'll, they take on?
Yeah, the lady that took over ATM's role when Mr. Bottom has, uh, Coffey?
Ashley Coffey.
Ashley Coffey, she's who we, she's our board of contact, we just placed a fellow the other night, as a matter of fact, that was coming through town from Somerset.
What's her last name?
Uh, Coffey. I think she has merged she management director, I think maybe...
That's right, that's right. You merged she managing director, is that what it's called, okay.
That's a fund that we all decided, I'll ever get to put in, and we put these folks up, like, that gentleman the other night is up for like one night, or something, I think, so she manages that, that's who, it used to be ATM, and it's her now, so...
Okay, I know that gentleman, I've worked with him, okay.
Ashley Coffey, and she's in the old courthouse up here.
I will find her, ma'am, I will take care of the rest of that, thank you.
That's who you need to get.
That's all I need to know.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna thank you, too, because my last homeless place, I was having, through uh, well, it's got, it's one of my re-revocations, since my reputation's good now, the Breakaway Project, it's about the homeless banks, and I was affiliated with them, but I wasn't on the bar, and never know where the money came, I didn't care. My role in that was, is I was a custodial engineer, I done community service for the Drug Corps, and I offered Kevin, you know, anybody who's in community service, I'd take them up there and work, and I already signed up for the Drug Corps for that, so. And I done sponsorship, and twelve-step workshops, I'm a sponsor of each other, so, that was my only role in the bad reputation of the late Colonel Breakaway Project. I, 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 like I said, I don't own money, I don't need any money, you know? But I'll get another proposal later, any money that anybody gives me, they definitely were expanding. They get receipts if they want, and I will stop, I will match any donations that anybody gives me, because, why? Because I already do, I fund my own staff with disability and out jobs, I create jobs. I take all these bounties, homeless peoples, it comes out of prison, I have reference to many of them, but I take them from my out jobs, and I share my money with them, to get them on their feet, if they stay clean and sober, and I have them get apartments, I have them get all this stuff, anyway, enough about me.
We appreciate what you do, there's people that need help, and we appreciate you doing that.
It's my way of giving back to this community for as much money as I cost them. If you guys would like some funding from the state, or any other entity around here, this is a gentleman. The gentleman Jeff Folly came down to City Council, and he said that if y'all didn't fund us some more, that he was gonna go get drunk and start using drugs again.
They don't want to deal with that.
Thank, thank you for listening to me.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you for coming, we appreciate it, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
We do, we appreciate it.
Yeah, God shows me how, ma'am, but thank you for your recognition, but, I mean, I'm gonna do it whether I'm happy or not.
Sure.
God, God give me my blessings, hopefully, and that, thank you, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you for your...
Thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing.
Uh, nobody's seen it, uh, we, our playground is coming in, and uh, uh, Terry Stevens has agreed to donate our uh fence, all the fence, so uh Greg Lawson measured it out for us, Tyler and, and Neil, I think, are gonna look this, look this over, but it's uh, it's gonna be very nice, and uh, like I say, he's, he's donating a large amount of fence, six foot high, to go around our playground over there. Thank him.
Yes, we appreciate anything. Leo, do you have anything?
I, I have one other question, it was, and I, Kay, Tyler, uh, the new nine-one-one center that they're planning on building, Springs has, has got, has given them some land, or sold them some land for one year, or for one dollar, am I, am I correct?
For a dollar, yes.
Heard. Okay, they got the jail premise, actually, now they got the nine-one-one center. We need to get in line here, and, and we've got property we can give them.
I think that was brought up, I, I'm, I'm, me and you talked about this, they, it wouldn't, we were gonna give them land, I mean, that was brought up.
Yeah.
You know, it's, that's been, what, a few years ago?
Six months ago, at least.
Well, when we first started talking.
So their mind was made up? Ever deal with it?
Apparently.
Yeah.
Well...
We agreed, too, that we...
What goes with that, I'm, I'm not even, I'm not even sure what, what goes with the nine-one-one center?
As far as...
I mean, would it just be dispatch, does that just dispatch people?
I think just what, what's in the basement of the EMS, right?
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, communication hub for everything, we usually, emergency service, fire, EMS, police, everything goes through that. Uh, you call nine-one-one, that's where you're going, right there, uh, the non-emergency number, sixty-six hundred number is all, it's twenty-four hours, man, um, I'm not sure how many boys it has, but six, eight, ten, something like that.
You know, uh, I'm good friends with Eddie, and we all get along good, and that city restaurants in Jamestown, well, but we got to do something about, about stealing our little uh entities, you know? Uh, I want, stealing is a strong word, but, yeah, that's a strong word, I didn't alienate it.
Camera.
But uh, we'd like to be in on the, we'd like to be in on the heaping and heaping stuff in Jamestown, I think.
Where are they gonna come up, where are they coming up with the money to build this building and make this monument?
Well, uh, Governor Shear, or...
Arba, that's what they told on the radio, they said, "Arba money," they're Arba, money that they got, you know, they got, I think, one, four or something, and they, part of that money is to build the center.
Yeah, we used it or lose it.
I mean, it's, they've got plenty of time to use the Arba money, I mean, the same, same as the money we got.
But, you know, it's just like the library, they tried to, they, they nearly got the library.
Where, how, how, how was that decision, how was that decision made, is it made...
It was the library board, there.
No, I mean, okay, is this, do they have a nine-one-one board, is there a board, they have a nine-one-one dispatch?
Yeah, I'm not for sure who's on that board, uh, the sheriff, I think is, I think the sheriff is the only law enforcement representative that's on that board, as far as I know, I think maybe now Mayor Hinton will be on that board, because I think Mayor Shear was going to be on that board, uh, just got changed shortly before he left, um...
Jamestown all the way.
I don't know who else is on, I don't know, I, at one time, years ago in my career, the, the police chiefs were always on that board, uh...
Fire chiefs were at one time.
Fire chiefs, I think they actually rotated fire chiefs maybe at one time, uh, probably EMS director, that is, that is a vital thing to have, a lot of counties are going away from that, to where, uh, I think Casey County, Lincoln County, several counties have put together a form one, so when you call nine-one-one, you're going to an off-site place, I think we, as a community, need to keep that local, um, because in the past, we've had dispatchers that are not from here, uh, work here, and there's been an accident at the old Hardee's building, we've even been running into that with our newer police officers, they don't know the tech was Hardee's back twenty years ago, so...
Before the Avalon, yeah.
We use those places, they're all just... And, you know, I, I still do that today, you know, I would still refer to that as the old, old Hardee's building, I mean, you know, but, um, so I think it's something that we really need to keep in our community, as far, I don't, I wouldn't wanna see it go off-site to another, to another county, or a tract county, or something like Casey, Lincoln, whoever formed together, I don't know, so...
We are funding uh twenty-five percent of the dispatch, and I think we need to have boys on the dispatch board itself, I don't know, I, I was, thought the police chief was still on it. So what representative do we have from the city on the board to represent our interest on it, because we fund twenty-five percent of it.
I thought it was gonna be the mayor, is, is what, what I, I thought it was going to be the police, and then it changed to the mayor, and that was short of the former mayor's year left, so...
Who's on that board that we need to, and, and maybe, I wonder... Who's on that board that we need to, and, and maybe, I wonder if the county is the one funding the money, would the county have made the decision about where?
I, I don't know.
I, I don't know, that, or would it have been the board, I don't know who would have chose. That we may need to find out something about the board and see about getting somebody to.
And we spoke about Ms. Coffey on the homeless thing, I think she has, she's probably inherited some, some of her own into the last two, her being emergency management, so she would be involved in that.
Yeah.
But I know the only law enforcement, I think, is the sheriff.
It's required by statute, it requires that the majority be from law enforcement, it can be the county attorney, the Commonwealth attorney, and a couple of places, but it has to be a majority law enforcement representation, but it doesn't have to be a hundred percent, it can be fifty, hundred percent. Unless the things have changed since I was involved. But, yeah, so we need to have some representation, I don't, we're paid twenty-five percent of the, of the bill, we need to have some representation on board.
But, yeah, we need to.
Probably wrong choice of word.
No, you did fine.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, I've never seen, I've, I've never seen a, another county with, with a jail within the county.
County attorney, maybe, I think.
Easy to understand that, though.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, I just wondered about that, because, I mean, uh, they're getting some things out of Jamestown, and, and it's vital, it's vital for the county, I mean, it's got, we need one new, I know we need a new one, and I'd be, I might be nitpicking a little bit, but I like to keep everything in Jamestown that I can.
Sure, that's what, I mean. So we need.
But, I mean, it's done, it's a done deal now, they sold them a piece of land for dollars, so.
It's already done, it's already been.
But in the future, we need some kind of, uh, representative, uh, for our interests.
Maybe we need to go back to what Sherry Lemon used to be up to there.
Take it back, yeah.
You know, we can take last thing, don't take.
But, again, not, it's not down to Russell Springs, but it's just our interests, but. I see you think, yeah, that was pretty rough, wasn't it?
I was saying a groundbreaking, I gotta do.
I'm going to chill.
Anyway.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay, I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Need a second?
Thank you.
Sound favor?
Uh, yeah.
Everyone else?
Still with. No, there's all things, that list will be.